Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of Waukegan City Council Meeting for the 20th of December 2010. Roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
President.
Alderman Larson.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Figueroa.
President.
Alderman Newsome.
President.
Alderman Tempass.
President.
Thank you. We have a quorum. If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During my mayor's comments period, we will be taking a few minutes to watch a video. If anybody had a chance to see 60 Minutes last night, they put on about a 10 to 12-minute segment that dealt with the implications of the same situation that we're involved in out in New Jersey, and what the governor there is talking about doing, what his problems are. And this is a universal issue. This is not something that's just Waukegan. It is across the nation. It's across the globe, truthfully. It is. I'm sorry. So it's something that we're not alone in it. There's no magic formula for getting out of it. And there is nobody on a white horse riding to rescue us. We're going to have to make some tough decisions tonight that will impact the City of Waukegan, that will impact our ability to provide you with the services that everyone has, by and large, over the years gotten used to. I don't have control over where we're going to go at this moment. This is a legislative body decision. But I will tell you, whatever amount of revenue I am provided, I will conform city government to that. So if the levy stays the same and our revenues drop, we will take appropriate action. Over the last year and few months since I was elected, I have been speaking constantly. Every time I've gotten in front of the city council chambers, I have spoken about the problems that we are experiencing and that are coming. I have been warning the city and its residents continuously. If any of you attended my State of the City address at the Genesee Theater, which was open to the public and was scheduled on an evening so that people could come after work, I gave you an overview of how we got here. And I warned everybody that this isn't over yet. There are still problems. There are still downfalls, downturns coming our way. But the question that's before us as residents is, how are we prepared to meet those issues, those problems? Many of the people in attendance here are old enough to have lived not only during the Depression or during the Depression, but also World War II. You've experienced and seen some pretty hard times. You've seen things come very, very close to falling apart at the seams in this nation. Now, we're two years into this recession, and we have longer to go. Everybody that knows the business of economics has said we have years to go, probably 2014, maybe 2015, before we start to be lifted up out of this situation. How we react, how we go forward as a community, is going to be reflected on how we're perceived. It's our reputation. A lot of the questions that we heard tonight were excellent. And I would like to say that since the day I came in, we have been working very hard to bring new businesses to Waukegan, to bring new opportunities, to try to bring new partnerships. But anybody who has been involved in economic development understands that businesses come to cities, by and large, with their handout first. They look for tax breaks through TIFs. They look for grants. They look for some way of the community to underwrite their coming into a city. If we make decisions tonight that put us into a position where our levy is flat, that will be perceived by the development and business community and the finance community as a signal that the city is pulling back, that the city is not reaching out to them to bring them here, but that we are pulling back, that we are digging in, we are entrenched ourselves. You know, when I brought up the issue of those of us that are here that are a little bit older, my mom turned 94 on Saturday. She lived through it. World War II, the people of the United States banded together. They stopped driving. They didn't change their tires on their car for years. In fact, tires were hardly available because rubber sweat was such a rare commodity. They didn't have new cars because they stopped making cars. They had something called war bonds. That's where individuals, citizens of the United States, gave of their money to government to wage a war against forces of tyranny across the world. And they made sacrifices. And they got through it, but it wasn't easy. And we're in a war right now. We're in a war across the globe that involves violence, but we're a war in our own home community that's economic. You know, when I got elected, I promised myself, and I promised everybody that supported me, that I would never say something just because I thought people wanted to hear it. I would never make a decision based on politics. I wasn't running to be mayor for life. I was running to fix the problems that are before us. We've done our best, and we've struggled. The Genesee Theater that was brought up, that's a real struggle. And that's been frustrating to me since the day I took office about forcing them to have more shows so that our investment in that would start to pay off. The Lakefront Development has been a struggle. But since I've been in, we're starting to make incremental progress. And projects as big as that don't happen overnight. But time was lost. And you can't get back time once you've lost it. We've tried our best to try to work, to put pressure on landlords and property owners who have allowed their properties to run down, allowed the surrounding neighborhoods to be affected in a negative way. And we are moving forward on that front. But, you know, the one woman who said that I got up during the last meeting and was slamming Waukegan and slamming its residents, well, I'd like to take just a quick poll, if I could, of the people that are here today. Because the issue was, one, of the city coming out and becoming part of a community again, not just a city where people live and they don't take part in what's going on, but being part of a community. So could I ask those of us that were at the Christmas festival in downtown Waukegan to raise their hands? Could you look around yourselves for a moment? This is what I was talking about. Something happened. Something happened to all of us. We've pulled back into our own shells. We use Waukegan as a, we're like commuter community, a bedroom community. Thirteen percent of us get out and vote. And then we're outraged when those people that we elected are not looking out for our best interests as a collective whole. Because when thirteen percent of us vote, do you think they're looking over their shoulder worrying about how the voter is concerned? That's an awful small number of people running the City of Waukegan. And that's how you get where we are today. So if tonight, if our legislative body decides that the levy will not be raised, I look at myself as a chairman of this corporation, I will mold city government to work within that budget. Cuts will have to be made. Services will have to be foregone. I go back to last year when we talked about laying off potentially two to three police officers, a few other clerical personnel, and others, none of which whom I wanted to lay off. There was a great deal of outrage among the residents of the City of Waukegan about that. The levy was raised back then. The call went out from this dais, raise the levy, protect the jobs of the union employees, and, but you know what? Nobody said anything about the 30 or 40 non-union that were laid off as a result of the cuts that were forced upon us. Everybody knows what happened with the crossing guards. We were forced to work with the school district to find a solution to providing safe crossing, safe crossing for our children in our streets. The lifeguards, they were lost to us. This isn't because we wanted to do this. This was forced upon us via union contracts. If I could only share the intimate details of some of those contracts with you, you'd be stunned at what they include. We changed the phone number on one of our contracts. We got a grievance against it for the health, I'm sorry, for the health plan. We had a grievance. We are locked into certain things that there is no easy way out of. People have called me and said, get rid of the unions. Just tell them if they don't take a pay cut, they're fired and get rid of them. Doesn't work like that in Illinois. The laws and the statutes in this state protect unions far more than they do their employers. I'm not anti-union. I was a card-carrying laborer for years out of the Highwood local. But I am now in management, and it's my job to make sure that the interests of my shareholders, which are you, are best served. Now, there's been a lot of complaint about the fact that these numbers for the tax rate increase were so high. I did that on purpose. I did that so you would all understand as a community the true cost of providing government service at its current levels. Then we came up with a middle option. It's called the 5% option. And all of this will come before all of the members here. That 5% option, we will have to make some cuts. And your levies will go up, but not as high as that absolute top option. Then there's the next option, which is the no levy increase. I just want everybody to understand what that truly means if we do that. It means a reduction in forces all across the board. If we have a heavy snow, you look out the window, it's starting to snow right now. If we make these cuts and we have a heavy snow, everybody's used to it. Waukegan digs itself out overnight, doesn't it? That's not going to happen anymore. And it may get to the point we'll make decisions that some streets won't get plowed. We'll focus on the main ones. Parking lots probably won't get plowed. Our code enforcement will be impacted. We get calls from many residents saying, I've got too many people living in the home next to me. Or there's some problem that's a code enforcement violation. Get over here and help me take care of it so that my home and my life isn't impacted. And we get a guy over there usually within a day or two. That will be impacted. Those days will stretch out into many days and into a week or longer before we're able to get to it. We have a great fire department. That will be impacted. We will have to make tough decisions on our manning numbers at our stations and our ability to answer calls. If our streets aren't plowed, getting ambulances and fire trucks through them becomes that much more difficult. We have a great police department. That will be impacted. Everything that you're used to getting from city government will be impacted and it will be reduced if we go forward with the no levy increase. As I said, I'm here as manager. If my Board of Directors, the aldermen, tell me this is what I have to work with, I'll work with it. But I want everybody to understand what that truly means if we do that. We all have to be ready to accept that change. Our financial status will be badly impacted. Our ability to issue bonds for projects will be impacted. Our bond rating will go to junk bond status. It's close to that now. Our ability to get down the debt that the city has will be impacted so that we're carrying debt long term, so that your children and grandchildren will have more debt in their future than you do This is, this is the new Waukegan if we go that direction. And if it's the will of the voter, the will of the people, that that's what happens, and you're speaking through your alderman, then that's what we will have, and we will work and provide the best we can, given that. Well, tonight, we have a short video that we'd like to share with you that was from 60 Minutes. And I think you'll find this very interesting. It runs about 13 minutes, and it shows the impact of the situation that we're in. Another state, another body of government, but it might as well be a mirror being held up to ourselves because it's right on the money.
By now, just about everyone in the country is aware of the federal deficit problem. But you should know that there is another financial crisis looming involving state and local governments. It's gotten much less attention because each state has a slightly different story. But in the two years since the Great Recession wrecked their economies and shriveled their income, the states have collectively spent nearly a half a trillion dollars more than they've collected in taxes, and there is a trillion-dollar hole in their public pension funds. The states have been getting by on billions of dollars in federal stimulus funds, but the Day of Reckoning is at hand. The debt crisis is already making Wall Street nervous, and some believe that it could derail the recovery, cost a million public employees their jobs, and require another big bailout package that no one in Washington wants to talk about.
The story will continue in a moment.
The most alarming thing about the state issue is the level of complacency.
Meredith Whitney is one of the most respected financial analysts on Wall Street and one of the most influential women in American business. She made her reputation by warning that the big banks were in big trouble long before the 2008 collapse. Now she's warning about a financial meltdown in state and local governments.
It has tentacles as wide as anything I've seen. I think next to housing, this is the single most important issue in the United States and certainly the largest threat to the US economy.
Why aren't people paying attention?
Because they don't pay attention until they have to.
Whitney says it's time to start.
The money that we take in, that's all the money we can spend.
California, which faces a $19 billion budget deficit next year, has a credit rating approaching junk status. It now spends more money on public employee pensions than it does on the state university system, which had to increase tuition by 32%. Arizona is so desperate it sold off the state capitol, Supreme Court building, and legislative chambers to a group of investors, and now leases the buildings from their new owner. The state also eliminated Medicaid funding for most organ transplants. Then there's New Jersey. It had the highest taxes in the country, a $10 billion deficit, and a depressed economy when first-year Governor Chris Christie took office. But after looking at the books, he decided to walk away from a long-planned and much-needed project with New York and the federal government to build a rail tunnel into Manhattan. It would have helped the economy and given employment to 6,000 construction workers.
Lots of jobs?
Yeah. I cancel it. Listen, the bottom line is, I don't have the money. And you know what? I can't pay people for those jobs if I don't have the money to pay them. Where am I getting the money? I don't have it. I literally don't have it.
Is this going on all over the country?
Yes. Of course it is. It's not like you can avoid it forever because it's here now. And we all know it's here. And the federal government doesn't have the money to paper over it anymore either for the states. The Day of Reckoning has arrived. It's it. And it's going to arrive everywhere. Time may vary a little bit depending upon which state you're in, but it's coming.
In nowhere has the reckoning been as bad as it is in Illinois, a state that spends twice as much as it collects in taxes and is unable to pay its bills.
This is the state of affairs in Illinois. It's not pretty.
Dan Hines is the Comptroller of the State of Illinois, its paymaster. He currently has about $5 billion in outstanding bills in his office and not enough money in the state's coffers to pay them. He says they're six months behind.
How many people do you have clamoring for money?
It's fair to say that there are, you know, tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of people waiting to be paid by the state.
So how are these people getting by if they're not getting paid by the state?
Well, that's the tragedy. People borrow money. They borrow in order to, you know, get by until the state pays them.
They're subsidizing the state. They're giving the state a float.
Exactly.
And who do you owe that money to?
Pretty much anybody who has any interaction with state government, we owe money to.
That would include everyone from the University of Illinois, which is owed $400 million, to small businessmen like Meyer Shaw, who owns a pharmacy in Chicago and has been waiting months for $200,000 in Medicaid payments. Then there are the 2,000 not-for-profit organizations that are owed $1 billion by the state. Lutheran Services has been around since 1867 and provides critical services to 70,000 people, mostly the elderly, the disabled, and the mentally ill. The state owed them $9 million just before Thanksgiving, and they nearly had to close up shop.
How long can you go on like this?
Well, we wonder that too because we really don't know.
Reverend Denver Bidner is the president of Lutheran Services. He says they were forced to tap their entire line of credit and all their cash reserves before the state would finally pay them as a hardship case.
It has to be that you've, you've, you've sold off all of your assets, you have, you have borrowed from everybody you could borrow from, and then we'll think about it.
Even though they owe you the money?
Even though they owe us the money.
The first words out of my mouth are usually an apology because they have been, you know, put in this situation that, you know, really is unacceptable. And, you know, there's very little I can do or say other than apologize.
It's not just the social safety net that Comptroller Dan Hines has to worry about. There have been Illinois legislators evicted from their offices because the state didn't pay their rent, and stories about state troopers being turned away from gas stations because the owners refused to take their state credit cards.
The state's a deadbeat.
Yeah. I mean, the State of Illinois is known as a deadbeat state. You know, this is a reputation that has taken us years to earn, and we've reached, you know, the heights of, I think, becoming the worst in the country.
Not all of the problems that Illinois and other states are facing right now can be traced to the Great Recession, but the precipitous drop in tax revenues did expose decades of financial irresponsibility, reckless spending, unrealistic benefit packages for public employees, and the use of political gimmicks to cover up hidden deficits. It's forcing state governors and the public to confront some harsh realities.
This is different, isn't it?
It is very different. And the reason it's different is because the only choices left are choices that people previously have said were politically impossible, that you couldn't do. You couldn't cut K-12 education funding. You couldn't do those things. They were, you couldn't talk about pension and benefit reform for the public sector unions, that these were third rails of politics. We are now left with no alternatives.
Just the third rail.
Yeah, that's it. I'm just going to grab it and go and let the chips fall where they may.
This money's got to come from someplace.
In some ways, Governor Chris Christie is the political canary in the coal mine of the state fiscal crisis. He slashed New Jersey's budget by 26%, including $1 billion in cuts to education, forcing the layoffs of thousands of teachers. He got rid of 1,300 state workers and drastically reduced funding to New Jersey's cities, counties, and villages, which have their own financial problems. And he's still facing another $10 billion deficit next year. Long term, the situation is much, much worse.
Okay, let's talk about the pension obligations.
Sure.
$46 billion unfunded liability for pensions, $66 billion unfunded for healthcare liability.
Yes, sir.
That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money even for the federal government.
That's a lot of money.
And there are people who think it's worse.
Yeah, I think that's an optimistic view. Listen, at this point, if it's worse, what's the difference? I mean, it's bad enough as it is, so what's the difference? I mean, now, we're talking about money that none of us can really get our arms around.
I mean, this is unsustainable, right?
Totally unsustainable. We have a benefit problem. It's not an income problem from the state. It's a benefit problem. And so we've got to change those benefits.
And what's the reaction been to that?
Depends on where you sit. I mean, I think the general public thinks, I can't believe anybody gets a pension anymore. I've got a 401K. It got killed in the stock market. I don't know what I'm going to do for my retirement. I can't believe people get a pension anymore. So I think amongst the broad general public, they've said, amen. And I think among the public sector unions, they're yelling and screaming.
And Christie is yelling back. He provoked a very public fight with the teachers' union, which is one of the most powerful political forces in the state of New Jersey.
And you're not compensating me for my education, and you're not compensating me for my experience. That's...
Well, you know what? Then you don't have to do it.
It's a scene that is starting to play out all over the country.
Cuts, 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 and more cuts.
Governors of cash-strapped states are beginning to cajole or bully public employee unions into making concessions on what are considered to be gold-plated retirement and healthcare packages, which are now collectively underfunded to the tune of $1 trillion.
Some union leaders have suggested that you're ruining the state like Tony Soprano.
Well, that's, as an Italian-American, I take great offense to that. Listen, you know what it is? I'm the first person to expose them for what they've been doing to the public.
You want the public employee unions to share the pain?
You bet. I want them to share in the sacrifice. And this is what I say to public sector unions, listen, you can boo me now, but I'm the first governor who's walked into this room in 10 years and told you the truth. And here's the truth. If you don't partner with me to get this done, in 10 years, you won't have a pension. And that's the truth.
But it's also the truth that some of the responsibility for New Jersey's pension woes lie at the doorstep of the governor's mansion. Christie and his predecessors have failed to contribute the state's share of its pension obligations in 13 of the last 17 years, one of the reasons the fund is going broke. Christie says it's ancient history.
We spent too much on everything. We spent too much. We spent money we didn't have. We borrowed money just crazily. The credit cards maxed out, and it's over. It's over. We now have to get to the business of climbing out of the hole. We've been digging it for a decade or more. We've got to climb now. And climbing's harder. We've got to do it.
The problem with that, according to Wall Street analyst Meredith Whitney, is that no one really knows how deep the holes are. She and her staff spent two years and thousands of man-hours trying to analyze the financial condition of the 15 largest states. She wanted to find out if they would be able to pay back the money they borrowed and what kind of a risk they pose to the $3 trillion municipal bond market, where state and local governments go to finance their schools, highways, and other projects.
How accurate is the financial information that's public on the states and municipalities?
The lack of transparency with the state disclosure is the worst I have ever seen. Ultimately, we have to use what's publicly available data, and a lot of it is as old as June 2008. So that's before the financial crisis hit in the fall of 2008.
Whitney believes the states will find a way to honor their debts, but she's afraid that some local governments, which depend on their state for a third of their revenues, will get squeezed as the states are forced to tighten their belts. as the states are forced to tighten their belts. She's convinced that some cities and counties will be unable to meet their obligations to municipal bondholders who finance their debt. Earlier this year, the state of Pennsylvania had to rescue the city of Harrisburg, its capital, from defaulting on hundreds of millions of dollars in debt for an incinerator project.
There's not a doubt in my mind that you will see a spate of municipal bond defaults.
How many is a spate?
You could see 50 sizable defaults, 50 to 100 sizable defaults, more. This will amount to hundreds of billions of dollars worth of defaults.
Municipal bonds have long been considered to be among the safest investments, bought by small investors saving for retirement and held in huge numbers by big banks. Even a few defaults could affect the entire market. Right now, the big bond rating agencies like Standard and Poor's and Moody's, who got everything wrong in the housing collapse, say there's no cause for concern. But Meredith Whitney doesn't believe it.
When individual investors look to people that are supposed to know better, they're told, they're patted on the head and told, "It's not something you need to worry about." When it'll be something to worry about within the next 12 months.
12 months?
12 months.
No one is talking about it now, but the big test will come this spring. That's when $160 billion in federal stimulus money that's helped states and local governments limp through the Great Recession will run out. The states are going to need more cash and will almost certainly ask for another bailout. Only this time, there are no guarantees that Washington will ride to the rescue.
Well, all we need to do is substitute the word Waukegan every time you heard another municipality or county or state mentioned. This is Waukegan. We are in the same situation. Is it all hopeless? No. We've got a few things. And we were, a few of the people who spoke were concerned about the city's contribution to the College of Lake County project in downtown Waukegan. That was money that came from bonds and was always designated to tear down one of the biggest eyesores in the whole city, which is the old New Sun building. It's unsafe. We've had homeless living in it. We've had drug activity. We've had all kinds of other things going on in there. And as the owners of that, we cannot look to other building owners and property owners and ask them to take care of their property, to demolish those buildings that have no further use and are not willing to invest in if we don't do it ourselves. The amount of money that was mentioned is not accurate. It will be lower than that. The project will hire several dozen Waukegan residents in the initial stage of the demolition. And then in the construction, up to 350 jobs will be created. Once it's built, and I have spoken with Senator Link, Senator Link did say that the money is there, that it will be moved forward, and this project will start. It's better than nothing. It's something in our downtown. And 1,500 young people coming into Waukegan to attend classes is nothing to turn your nose up at. Those are people who will come out of that building and give our downtown businesses that boost that they've been looking for. It's not going to happen overnight. This is going to take several years to get done. The Old Karcher, the art space project, that's a project that I inherited. The city of Waukegan has a stake in that game. And we're moving it forward. It is another project that will create jobs for local residents. It's state-funded. It's state-supported, and it's supported by the city through TIF funds and other funding. And it will bring a number of people. I don't have the exact number right off the top of my head, but it will bring people into our downtown. These are not Section 8 units. These are all people to be able to gain residence there have to have a job and have to be able to pay the rent. They're working artists. This project and this group has never failed to rehab a building, get it occupied, and have an impact on the community where this occurs. We feel this is a solid investment on the part of the city of Waukegan. Our lakefront. Yeah, it's way behind schedule. In fact, one of the architects of the master plan came in and met with the city and our city council and other members of other groups and told us. He asked us, "What's the matter with you? You've wasted seven years on this plan. This should have been going a long time ago. You've missed windows of opportunity." Because certain things weren't getting done. They weren't making progress in getting the railroad tracks moved. We're starting to make some progress there. If you drive down Seahorse Drive, do you see the OMC plant anymore? It's gone. The next phase is the cleanup of the groundwater. Our harbor is being dredged and cleaned of PCBs. These were all impediments to the redevelopment of our lakefront. And this is how Waukegan was perceived, as a polluted, ex-industrial community that was going nowhere. We will get there. But I will say this. Tonight's decision will impact that. If we're not willing to support ourselves, if we're not willing to make the unpopular and hard decision, the development that we all want will be impacted. Because it takes city staff. It will take city treasure to be able to get that going. We cannot do it with the levy that is before us today without the levy being raised at all. It will delay what we've all waited so long to have in this community, a rebirth. And it will impact how we're perceived by the broader business community. So I'm just telling you straight up what's going on. As I said, if I'm given a levy with no raise, we'll make it work. And I just hope that everyone in the room that spoke today will be patient with us as services are impacted and things slow down. And when you come to buy your city sticker, the line is quite a bit longer. Our budget is like a balloon. If you squeeze in one area, it pops out in another. You cannot make the type of changes that are about to come our way without a major impact. So if the levy's kept low, we will have to look to other ways of raising revenue. Do you know how much you pay for garbage every quarter? Who looks at their bill? Does anybody have an idea? Raise your hand. It's five bucks. Do you know what the true cost of your garbage is every quarter? $50. We collect leaves from the curb in front of your home during the fall. That program costs us almost a quarter of a million plus. That'll stop. You'll have to bag your leaves. And before Violia will pick up your leaves, you may have to put a sticker on that that you'll have to purchase to help cover that cost. A lot of people in this room probably don't know that we got a notice from Violia shortly after I came in. They were going to shut our garbage service off because they hadn't been paid. We had to have an employee drive up to Milwaukee with a $1 million check to hand them so that our garbage service could continue. You make cuts in one area, you'll see growth in cost in another. It's just how it works. So I don't want anybody to be surprised. If your city sticker goes up, if your garbage collection goes up, if you end up paying the true cost of the services that we've all enjoyed for, in some cases, a generation or more, I want you to be ready for it. All right. I have a little letter I'd like to read on. There's a gentleman who spoke earlier by the name of Mr. Chris Blanks. Mr. Blanks asked me to write a letter for him to reflect on some of the issues that he has worked on here at the city of Waukegan. He's the founder and president of the National Action Network of Lake County. And he's also the founding president of an arts movement known as the Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. And that group has been devoted to bringing the healing power of the arts to young people disadvantaged and to those individuals recently incarcerated. Chris has been a strong voice in the community for equal access to work opportunities, education, and has done a great deal to encourage people of all ages to find self-fulfillment through the arts. The letter's long, so I'm not going to read the entire letter, Chris, if you'll grant me that, please. But he was awarded the name of Brother Blanks by the community, which serves as his nom de plume in order to help those he has taken the time to work with to better understand that a rebirth through the creative powers of the mind can create whole-new persona for individuals struggling to overcome past mistakes or their current lot in life. He has worked with Youth Build of Lake County to help young people going through that program to understand that any successful recovery from past mistakes and obstacles must also include the rejuvenation or, in some cases, first recognition of the creative power that exists within each and every one of us. As Waukegan seeks to reinvent itself in the years to come, the arts is going to play an important role in that, in that. And individuals such as Chris and his BAMM organization will certainly be front and center in that effort, joining in with other artistic groups that we have in the city of Waukegan that are trying to help with the rebirth of this community as an artistic center. Chris, I want to thank you for your time. I apologize for not being able to read the letter in its entirety, but I do acknowledge the work you've done. This is not the same as a city proclamation. It is a letter from my office to your organization commending you on what you've done. Now, I would like to go on to the items A and B that are under the mayor's comments. I have two appointments before me this evening. One is an appointment to the Civil Service. The Civil Service is very important. The commission's very important for the city of Waukegan because it oversees many matters that are related to police and fire, especially in the areas of discipline and potential firing and other matters. So in looking for an individual to serve on that, we went through quite a few names. I had a couple. I had one young lady that would have been a great fit, but unfortunately, she worked for the state through the state's attorney's office and was not eligible. But another young woman came to mind. Her name is Enid Rivera. She's heavily involved in a lot of issues in the city of Waukegan. She's got an amazing resume as a legal person and as a Waukegan activist. So this evening, I'm asking the aldermen to support the appointment to the Civil Service Commission because there are only three members. We're down to two. Now, in any body of government, when you have a quorum present, you can't conduct business. You're not even supposed to talk to one another. So you know what a quorum of two is? A quorum of two. So we needed this third member. So we needed this third member. My goal is to increase the Civil Service Commission to five, so that quorum issue will be less of a problem, and we'll have more voices heard in the issues before them. But Enid's resume was sent to all the aldermen last week. It has been reviewed by the members of the Civil Service Commission and our Human Resources Department, and she has been found to be highly capable and an excellent fit for this appointment. So I would like to ask for a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to make the appointment to the Civil Service Commission of Enid Rivera.
Is she here?
She's traveling. She's traveling.
I'm afraid unfortunately, she is not here at this time. But I would ask for all those in favor of her being appointed to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. I think we've made an excellent addition to the Civil Service Commission. She'll do a great job. Next before us, we have a opening in our Development Commission. The Development Commission is the first line. When somebody wants to come to Waukegan and do business here, build a new business, occupy an existing business, do something maybe that's not exactly in the zoning for a business, this is where they come to make their case to be able to do business in the city of Waukegan. I brought forth the name Ben Grimes for appointment. Ben is a gentleman who has been in this city for many years. He works with the Waukegan School District. He's a businessman. He has experience in finance. He has experience in understanding what business needs and how to work with it. I think he will make an excellent addition to this commission, and I would ask that we have a motion to approve Mr. Grimes. We have a motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. I think, yes, sir.
I'll see Ben.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Grimes is not, is not here.
Before the future, they need to be here. These guys need to be here at these meetings, particularly the first time out. It's good that because, you know, they are on camera, the audience, the people throughout the city of Waukegan watch this, the viewing orders is up, it's climbing, it is good that they know who they are. I really believe that everyone who's being appointed should be at the meeting, at least the day they get appointed. That's my personal belief.
Understood.
Yeah.
And what I'll do is I will ask them to come to the, I may not be at the next city council meeting, I'm not sure, but I will ask them to come to meet you, and if you have any questions to ask of them, they will certainly be willing to answer.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, alderman. Well, that concludes the mayor's comments. I think I've gone on for about 40 minutes, it feels like, including the video, so that's enough. We will go now to audience time. And do we have the sign-up sheet with us? Bear with me a second. Did he take it down from the door? I don't think so.
Yeah, you have it, it was over there.
Oh, I see, it got buried in here. Okay, thank you. First up is Diane Verratti, 2597 Club Home Lane.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I've lived in Waukegan since 1972. Raised our two children here. My husband's retired, and my full-time job for 23 years has been on the staff of a church. So his income's not going anywhere, and churches probably don't pay much more than other nonprofits. I've had the privilege for the better part of a decade to be pretty heavily involved in volunteering in the revitalization effort of our downtown, along with many other dedicated and committed individuals. And it's a privilege, and it's a joy to be able to serve this community that I love. I didn't make the entire meeting that preceded this one, but I was here long enough to hear many of the comments that were made. And one of the phrases that was repeated over and over again was "between a rock and a hard place." I know all you guys personally, and I like most of you all the time. I don't think you're between a rock and a hard place. I think those two positions are, on the one hand, don't take any more of our money, we don't have it to give you, and on the other hand, give us more services. Clean up our beach. Staff the beach. Attract businesses. Help with foreclosed homes. Develop Fountain Square. Do something downtown. What this reminds me of is a quote from a very old comic strip, and by revealing its name, I'll reveal that I am old. The comic strip is Pogo, and the quote is, "We have met the enemy, and he is us." We, as a community, cannot have it both ways, members of the city council and Mayor Sabanjan. We can't. I mentioned that I have a retired husband, and I work for a church. There's not more money coming into my pot anytime soon. I listened carefully, Mayor Sabanjan, to your comments tonight, and I see hope. I see optimism. I also hear words like sacrifice and hardship, and I think that as a community, a community of diverse people that I love because of its diversity, educationally, ethnically, economically, this is where I live, and I've chosen to live since 1972, we have got to come together and find a way to get through this time. And it's not by saying, "Give us more than we have now, but take less from us." I implore you, as a fellow citizen of this community, to make whatever hard choices you have to make. It's not easy, it's never easy to make the right choice, but I think you guys are up to it. And I thank you very much.
Next up, Chris, would you like to speak again? Chris Blanks? Okay.
Once again, Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street. I just want to reiterate the importance of holding those financially accountable for the city being in this deficit with this tax situation. Number two, the appointment of the, well, the Civil Service Commission. I think, as the aldermen explained, it's the importance of having that person here. Also, I want to say, the ones that are holding the Civil Service, correct me if I'm wrong, but Civil Service is responsible for holding law enforcement accountable, am I right, in their conduct, right? So with that being said, I don't think half of the citizens in here maybe even know who the Civil Service Commissioners are, and that they can actually go to them. So I think it's important that the Civil Service Commission do not be a entity of mystery. I think the citizens need, I think they need to be able to come out, the Civil Service Commissions need to be out here, and people can know who they are. They can see them, they need to be introduced as a citizen. And so on that, and, you know, that's what I wanted to say on that. Now, I want to thank you. Now, next, on a lighter note, Mayor, I do want to, I extend appreciation. I am Brother Blanks, founding president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind and National Action Network of Lake County. And on behalf of these organizations, I want to extend our appreciation for the letter. And Corporate Counsel, as I was leaving off the last city council meeting, I want to thank him for coming out to our grand opening on October the 24th. And the result of the letter came, Mayor, I know you say that I had requested for you to write the letter, but that letter came as a result that you said you wasn't going to be able to make it, and what you would do is send the letter. And so this is the letter that you just read for us. What I want to do, I want to take the time and just to kind of make the citizens a little bit aware of what we are doing in the community and extend an invitation out to those who wish to come out and take part in our literary arts program, or if you have youth. We have a Children of Incarcerated Parents Initiative. We have lots of young people out here who parents are locked up and they need some support when their parents are locked up. We also have our Writing and Literacy Through Poetry initiatives. And that and tutoring we have here, we have some tutoring that is going on that we want to have. So these are initiatives that we look into, that we are aspiring to achieve in our community. And I think it's important to note, you know, that letter that you gave me, and I'm looking at a letter here at April the 12th of 2000, where it says, "Brother Blanks informed me of the interest of, in exposing young people to poetry. I consider this proposal a visionary for young people who are routinely or not routinely exposed, who are routinely exposed to academic subjects and sports and so on, but not poetry." That letter was written April the 12th, 2000, when I initiated this over a decade ago, and that was written by Dr. Phil Kerrigan. And I thank you for that, Phil. And so I say that to say this, it has been a 10-year span that we have been providing services in this community without any state, federal, or local funding. And I want to say that it has been a blessing for us to be able to open the doors of our organization on October the 24th without any state, federal, or local funding. And I heard you, Mayor, say, "I know the city don't have, do not have any money, and I'm not looking to the city for any money or support. All I ask is that you all, you know, come out, see what the youth is doing at some point or another, and we just want to continue to provide a service in the community to help inspire those youth who need to be inspired in these critical times and keep the doors of our organization open." Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Chris. And last on the public comment is Mr. Jose Guzman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all the aldermen with my respect. I think we need to start to make a cut in the top, in the top, from top to the bottom. Lay off some people making $10, $15 an hour is no good. We've got to keep those people. We've got to start making a cut from the top. We've got a big piece of gold in the lake. Be it, good one. Somebody needs to start working in that. We cannot pay any more property taxes. Last time, one of the aldermen said, "The deficit used to be $44 million. Now it's over $100 million." We're going in the wrong direction. What are we doing? Who's going to pay the money? We need, all of you guys need to start working, bring some revenue. I like it what you're saying by Mr. Terry Link. We need to start to work together. We need to tell him to help us from the state, bring some money. We need to talk to Mark Kirk to help us. We only got blood. We don't got no money. You guys want some blood from us? That's all we're going to give you. That's, that's all. In 1970, I come in here in 1970, my family grew and raised my kids, my wife, in Waukegan. I used to drive a bicycle from Waukegan to Illinois Beachline, making $80 a week. In the 70s, I mean, I'm sorry, in the 80s, $600, $700 a week I used to make, and call Now, most of us, 200, 300. We don't got it. We don't got it. Start from the top. We've got a big piece of gold in here. Waukegan is one of the big, one of the best cities of Illinois. The work is not being, getting done. Now we in trouble. Don't get it from us. We don't got the money. I hit, every day I walk and see the people, they got a hard time to bring some food in the table. Now you guys raising the taxes? You guys killing us. Lot of people going to leave Waukegan, they already talking about that. They're raising taxes? I'm out of here. I go somewhere else, North Chicago, Zion. We've got to find another solution. They can bring some of those workers, instead of work five days, work four, doing the same job. Sometimes you have to work three. I don't know. We've got to do something, something for no, don't make us run away from Waukegan. We want to stay in Waukegan. We love Waukegan. One day, we're going to be the best cities of Illinois when this get to work. Now, and the Lake County College, Lake County College, they should build by the lake, beautiful landscaping over there, nice trees and everything for our future of the kids. Not here downtown. Now we got to pay over $400,000 to bring that building down. Money we don't have. I won't pay that. I would say I'd give it to you for a dollar, but I don't got no money to spend. I cannot, I cannot do it. Why they don't do it in different place? Why they have to be here in downtown? I mean, it's, last, last time, Mr. Cunningham saying something about, he never hear about a issue like that. They're talking about some kind of issue, said, "This is the first time I hear that." Now you guys work like that, make a deals, a millions of dollars in the deals, and you guys don't know, weeks before or days before, so you can read what's going on, so you can think about it, see if, see if it's right to vote yes or no? You got to let these aldermen know what's going on way before they coming to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. That concludes the audience time. I'll take a motion to accept the minutes of December 6, 2010, regular meeting and executive session. Motion by Alderman Conklin, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Do we have any resolutions and proclamations? Seeing none. We will go to Finance Committee, but I do want to let people know that we are going to juggle the agenda just a little bit so that we're able to get rid of much business as possible before we get into the, basically, the final things that we will be dealing with will be the tax levy. There is no executive session scheduled for tonight, so this move, this meeting will go straight through until it's concluded. So before us is the Finance Committee, Alderman Needham.
I was going to suggest, Your Honor, if we could take the agenda out of order, move New Business, Item C, which is the motion to approve the 2010 tax levy. There are a lot of people here this evening, and this is the basic issue we've been discussing tonight. Terrible weather outside, it's just a suggestion to keep going on the same course we've been going and keep the dialogue going and...
Second.
...come to some conclusion.
Now, I don't have, that would be perfectly fine with me if that's what you would like to do as the Chair of Finance. Absolutely, I don't have a problem with that. I think though we would want Julie then come forward towards it. If you'd like to take it up right now, we will have Julie Tappendorf will come and join us as we, as we go through this process. And so Julie, if you'd come. We need a motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest, to move, let me look here, Agenda...
10C.
10C up to, before the Finance Committee, and take that out of order. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Why is Julie here?
Well, I think we probably would want to review the options so that people understand how they read.
Yeah, just the motion, why is Julie here?
Bear with us one moment. We caught her, we caught her off guard. She was supposed to come up a little bit later in the meeting, so.
All righty.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, so what we have on the agenda is C, which is the motion to approve the 2010 tax levy. We provided three alternatives, which I think were discussed a little bit through the public hearing process. There was Alternative A, which was the motion to adopt an ordinance approving the tax levy in the amount of $29,850, or 29 million, I'm sorry, I'm sure you all wish it was 29,000. Alternative B, motion to adopt an ordinance as presented approving the 2010 tax levy in the amount of $21,929,578.94. Or Alternative C, motion to adopt an ordinance as presented approving the 2010 tax levy in the amount of $15,759.252. And we do have three ordinances here. Obviously, we're not going to act on all three of these. These are alternative options for the council members to consider, sort of briefly to discuss the different options. Option A is the, the max levy pursuant to the notice that was provided. State statute requires a notice whenever the levy is going to be 5% more than it was last year. The notice was published at the max levy because you can never approve more than whatever your notice states, and that is your option A. Option B is the middle option that the mayor discussed in his comments. And Option C is the no increase. I think if there are questions about what those options mean for the city and the finances, that's probably better addressed by the Finance Director. But if you have questions about the legal issues related to the options, again, these are, these are not a, approve all three, these are options. Certainly, there's an opportunity to amend any one of these three. They don't have to be adopted as is. These are options that are provided to the council, give you an idea of, of, I guess, basic options for you to consider.
Alderman Larson.
Comments by the aldermen, does it take place, could it take place now, or is it only after the motion is approved?
Yeah, no, right now.
We can talk about it right now.
I might as well say what I'm thinking. You're all here tonight to listen to all of us, so I appreciate your concern about the condition of the city and the possible benefits that accrue to you by being citizens of this fine town. I would like to share my thoughts with you regarding the levy we will be voting on tonight. I think it is accurate to say that the cost of running a business, and that's what it is, a business the size of Waukegan faces all kinds of cost containment challenges, even when business is good, i.e. sales and property tax revenues, water sales, building permit fees, all are increasing as they did in the early and mid 2000s. These gains are often eaten up by payroll and pension increases, borrowing like we did to meet our infrastructure improvement initiatives like Fountain Square, and as we did to our lakefront in downtown to fulfill the promise of our master plan. This plan, which was overwhelmingly supported by the citizens of Waukegan, will bring much needed development to our city, of that I am certain. Then we have special challenges that arrive, often unexpectedly. One challenge was getting a judgment of $12 million-plus against us for an overturned conviction that dated back to the mid 1980s. We had to add, I think it was $2 million more to the cleanup fund of the Yeoman Creek landfill, which was off of Sunset Avenue. We did that recently. A year or so ago, we had to come up with $1.3 million, and if I'm off of $100,000 on these, please forgive me, for the cleanup of the Pan American Rifle Range site on our lakefront. This dates back to 1959. And it was implemented and designed and overseen by the Department of the Army, but yet, all these decades later, the citizens of Waukegan had to pay for the cleanup of some asbestos that was left behind. You know, even the 2009 pension fund shortfalls of about $12 million, were mandated by the state of Illinois to cover that. So we've been hit hard in the last couple of years. But even with these challenges, we have continued to provide a high level of city services to, to our citizens. You know, over the last number of years, you've paid about 16 or 17 cents per dollar, tax dollar that you pay in our property taxes comes to Waukegan. Think you all have heard that numerous times. But this council has also taken aggressive action to contain the burden on our taxpayers. In the past two years, the city's workforce has been trimmed by approximately 200 full and part-time employees. No fun. Our non-union workforce has accepted pay and benefit cuts, and that's including the council, that have amounted to 10% or more over the last two years. This council has enacted, enacted laws like the so-called towing ordinance that has made our city measurably safer, and in fact, has lowered the cost of car insurance, approximately $100 per car for just your liability portion of your car insurance. You know, based on about 57,000 cars in Waukegan, they get a sticker every year, that's $5.7 million of economic benefit to all of us. Because, you know, we thought that we needed to make this city safer, and we did it. I introduced recently, and this council approved, a new plan for our alarm monitoring.
What's that?
Well, we have about 750 business accounts that have their alarms monitored by City of Waukegan. This new plan will lower the minimum, by a minimum of $300 a year... This new plan will lower the minimum, by a minimum of $300 a year to each business that converts to this new system. And in some of our far-flung entities, such as apartment complexes by Fountain Square, their annual savings in just phone line costs and the benefits of going to the new system will be about $25,000. And on top of that, the city's take of the revenues from the monitoring, which we share with the alarm equipment provider, will go, over the next five years, from approximately $400,000 total to about $1.5 million total over the next five years. And then, in subsequent years, the City of Waukegan will earn, without having to share that revenue, to about a half a million dollars a year. These are real things that this council has done to keep the wolf from the door to a certain extent. We take seriously our pursuit of ways to keep government fingers out of your pockets. But the costs of a city keep rising. The state of Illinois, as an example, mandates that the pension fund contributions, we must contribute to our police and fire personnel, to be just short of 30% of their salary. And this is all public record. And we all have the utmost respect and appreciation for all the, our employees and the skills they bring to their jobs. They do a great job. Waukegan, year after year, is considered the safest city our size of any comparable city in Illinois and Wisconsin. Kenosha, Evanston, Beloit, Rockford, right down the line, cities of about 80,000 to 120,000 people, we are the safest city. People don't think of us that way, unfortunately, but it's true. Our guys do a great job. That's why we want to keep them at their job. We must continue to provide that kind of service. Not doing so, in my estimation, would be catastrophic. We are not the only city facing these personnel cost issues. Perhaps you are aware that towns like Naperville, Mount Prospect, Elgin, Schaumburg, Hoffman Estate, and Aurora are cutting their workforces, including police and fire personnel. They certainly don't have the median incomes that Waukegan does, and yet, they are facing these same challenges as we saw on that video. There is a limit to the amount of support taxpayers are able to give during this economic crisis. I don't think anybody would disagree with that. In spite of all this, I remain optimistic about the future of the city. I see a wonderful base of citizens and volunteers that work hard to brighten the future of this city. I do see positive signs that our economy is on an upswing. I see it where I work. I see it in basic measurements like the building permits that are being pulled. We dropped from an average of $100 million of economic development over the last six, eight years, to less than $40 million last year. So, any upswing would be appreciated, but those building permit fees add up to helping pay for how the city is run. Asking for $50 or $60 a month on top of your current tax burden is not realistic. You know, there's other terms to put towards that thought. Neither, I believe, is a zero increase as we would have to gut city services. I believe doing so would be irresponsible and negatively impact our residents and their property values. And, as was mentioned earlier, it would have a terrible impact on our bond rating and our ability to fund improvements in the future. Based on staff analysis, I believe that we can continue to deliver a relatively high level of service to our citizens and keep the increase in burden to the average homeowner to less than $200 a year. That's what the option B infers. I think this is the only viable option that we should consider. But we also have to recognize that we will still have to tighten our belt, not, not put a noose around our neck, to continue operating sanely and more focused than we've been in the past. So thank you for all your calls and your thoughtful comments. I do love this city, and I thought you deserved to hear what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Larson. Any further comments? Alderman Needham?
Unfortunately, we're not all in the same boat. There's people who have both sailed away. They don't have their homes anymore, or their jobs. There are people on the brink right now, two-way phone call, not one person asked me to raise their taxes. Everybody begged, "Please don't increase our taxes." I get it. I totally get it. You heard some of the comments tonight about the difficulty in trying to, to balance, try to juggle this. You know, if we, if we go ahead with a, with a, with a moderate increase, how many more people, homes do we push them out of? I don't know the answer to that. People are struggling in more ways than we know. People made comments tonight, you know, "We don't want to increase, find a different way." Well, the balancing act's gonna come in, either no increase, no increase, and huge cuts in services and personnel, or a little balancing act. That's the different way. We don't have many options. Our largest income comes from income tax and sales tax, and it's not there. Comments were made about, you know, "It's no joke." We don't think it's a joke either. Everything we do up here affects us and our families also. There's no joking around up here. We all take this seriously. Like it or not, some people want to be on the other side, like we're two teams against each other. We're not. We're in the same boat you guys are. We're the ones that have to make the decision. There's three options on the table tonight. They're difficult choices. There's a fourth that I'd like to, to bring in for consideration. And the last option, option C, which we show as zero increase, zero increase, $0 per month on a $150,000 house. There's, I'm gonna call it the Tempest option, because Alderman Tempest talks about it, a modest 5% increase, with Tina Smigelsky ran the numbers for us. It's not much. 5% raises the tax on a $150,000 home, $4 a month. Not much, but it dwindles down some of the cutting and some of the services we're gonna have to put in place, once we do this. So, I'm gonna throw that out there. I know there's, I don't believe any support for the highest option, option A. So, when it comes time to make a motion, I would like to make a motion to accept, adopt the ordinance C as amended, and that's with the 5% increase. If I get a second, it's great. If I don't, we can still talk about it.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you. First of all, today, I was, I'm very proud of the public that came here today, in particular by constituents out from out West. And believe me, I heard what they had to say today. I've been hearing it for the past week, especially today. I've gotten several calls. You know, I have, you know, and it's gonna affect everyone, not only, you know, the residents in my, my constituents in my wood, but the entire city. I have residents out there that pay, you know, $26,000 a year in taxes. Now, to ask them for such a tax increase, it's, it's ridiculous. I can't, I cannot support that, and I will not. It's the same thing for the average person that owns, you know, 150, $100,000 home. You know, he has a certain income too, as well. So it's gonna affect everyone. I can't ask them to, you know, for such a tax increase like this. What I, what I am gonna ask, though, is that we revisit, you know, this grant for $2.25 million. I think it's, it's something that will, will help us in the next three, four years. I know the argument was, well, how do we, how are we gonna pay for it in the fourth year? Well, I firmly believe that the economy's gonna get better. The economy's gonna get better, but, but there was a lot of strategy in that, and the reason why it wasn't accepted. Believe me, people ought to know that. There was a strategy behind it. Because if it was, if it would have been accepted, there's no way that there would have been any layoffs in, in police and fire. So I'm gonna ask that we at least look into that. And also, I'm gonna ask that we, you know, look at the, as well as the, the new legislation that's sitting on the governor's desk that he's about ready to sign. And he's gonna sign it. Hopefully, this week, he signs it. And how much that is gonna save the city. There's many communities out there that are embracing it. Communities like Rockford, which is a similar community like ours. I know I tried, I did look at, into the internet, I know that was brought up today, in terms of the, you know, the Senate bill. But the meat and potatoes of it, I'd like to hear more about it, and I think this will help the city in the long run. So we need to look into that. The amortization, we need to look into that too, as well. I just want to say that I'm gonna fight for our taxpayers. I wanna make sure that we've looked into everything before we even make this decision. I know we have three alternatives in front of us today. When my vote comes, you'll hear it. But again, we still gotta continue watching how we spend our money, just like anything else. I gotta watch how I spend my money in my household. Believe me, we're, we're going through some tough times as well. So there's other options out there, and I know it. And we gotta look into it. We gotta make sure, we gotta give our citizens the best that we can in looking at all the options. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Alderman.
Your Honor, just for the record...
Yes.
At, at the break, Alderman Moiseo and myself spoke with Officer Villaforte and Officer Reed. We'd like to meet with Tina on Wednesday sometime, and I know this is a surprise. There's a lot of finger-pointing and misinformation on this COPS grant, and we'd like to sit down and, and just get down to brass tacks and find out what's true and what's not true, and cut to the chase and, and be done with this. Bring back some results.
Obviously, it's your choice. I have no problem with it, if you want to speak with her, just long as we don't enter into the area of negotiations during the course of that.
Right, we talked about that.
And I do want to let the council know that our information that we received late this afternoon is that the governor will be vetoing the pension reform bill, sending it back for some revisions that he has requested. So, that is not ready to be signed by the governor at this point.
Well, Mayor, I mean, I, I wanna see that in writing.
Well, that's the information that we received late this afternoon. So obviously, the, when the written comment or written response comes from the governor's office, we'll all see it. Would you have any more comments? Alderman Moiseo.
Real quick. Obviously, this is a tough decision. When you talk about a 0% levy, talk about cutting services, you're looking at a guy who's alive because of the Waukegan Fire Department, there's no other way to put it. So, don't think I'm not appreciative of that. But that's me as a taxpayer and as a citizen. But up here, I have to remember who I work for and who I represent, and that's the people. And if the people overwhelmingly tell you that they don't want you in your pocket anymore, you have to listen to that. And I want to appreciate the mayor for making his comments and being honest and saying that it will get bad. And services will, if it goes zero, services will be cut, and we'll have to bond together, and we'll have to do things and get used to things that we haven't had. There's no other way to put it. He hasn't sugarcoated it, and he said he'll deal with whatever he gets. He needs to be commended for that. But at the end of the day, like I said, me as a, as an alderman, as an elected official, I have to listen to the people. I'm not unappreciative of the services that the City of Waukegan gives, because I think they're the best around. I think everybody in here understands that. But the temperature of the, of the city, the temperature of the country is get out of my pocket. Find another way to do it. And we're gonna, we might have to be more creative. I think that's what the people have told us. We have to be more creative. We have to think harder, we gotta think out of the box. But then again, just like the mayor said, and just like Mrs. Verratti said, we as citizens can't come to, can't come to the city and can't come to the government and say, "You gotta fix this for me." Because the answer is gonna be, "We ain't got any money to fix it." We have to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Conken, and then Alderman Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things I'd like to mention. One of the problems we got here in the City of Waukegan, obviously, with the money involved, if you look at your tax bill, I think we get a heck of a product for the money that we pay the city. We get some great services, as the mayor mentioned, leaf pickup, snow plowing, general maintenance of the city. If you got a problem, call City Yards, and a problem with trees, they'll come and take care of the parkways and things like that. Problem I got is things like, we're not, if we raise the taxes, or if we don't raise the taxes, from what I'm understanding, the taxes are still going up. Governor Quinn, and we all read about it in the papers, has stated that the vote for him was a mandate to raise the income taxes for the state of Illinois. If I'm not mistaken, the Park District has already asked for more money, and so has the School District, if I remember, if that's what I heard correctly the other night. So regardless, this, I just think this is the wrong time for the city to be adding to the burden of the taxpayer. I don't believe that, I believe we've gotten a hell of a product, like I say, from the city for a lot of years, and I think they still do a great job. Another issue I'd like to address is, along with Alderman Rivera, I would have liked to have known the numbers, and what would have happened with that Senate bill? How would it affect the City of Waukegan? I think that would have made a, that's a very important piece of information for us to make a decision up here. Whether it was signed by the governor or not, I think that was a very important piece of information, to get an idea what kind of money we're talking, what could be deferred until 2041. It's something that we all have to think about, and I hope we all come to the right decision. Thank you.
You know, Alderman Conken, I'm gonna just very, very briefly ask Tina, if you wouldn't mind terribly, I know I said I would not try to drag you up in front tonight, but unfortunately, I need you, we've had this question asked now, about the fact that our review of the legislation does not indicate there was any advantage for us in this particular levy and situation. But again, I would ask Tina, would you please give us the, your take on this?
What I passed out at the beginning of the meeting was an email from the Police and Fire Pension Fund's actuary, who is much more of an expert in this particular area than I am. He noted that the bill had not yet been signed. He concurs that it will probably be vetoed for certain changes, that the bill would be effective January 1, 2011, which for the City of Waukegan means May 1, 2011, as the first day of our fiscal year, and that the benefit changes only affect employees hired after January 1, 2011, as Senator Link had spoken to. There are some calculations that will be changed. There's two actuarial items. One is a mandate to use a particular funding method, and that's a smoothing method on the assets. Unfortunately, and I'll quote directly from his email, "Unfortunately for the city, the smoothing method is not quite as smooth as the one we are using, so there may be a small adverse effect on your contribution. I haven't had time to fully analyze the change of the 90% funding on a new 30-year schedule as it relates to the 22-year funding left on the former schedule toward 100% funding. My gut feeling," and again, this is from Art Tepfer, "my gut feeling is that it will produce a smaller contribution in 2011, but the curve is steeper, so the future increases will come sooner than planned." And when he's referring to 2011, that is the 2011 tax levy that is for May 1, 2012. What you're considering tonight is the 2010 tax levy. Police and fire pension calculations are always two years in arrears. So... So it's the opinion of our actuary that those legislative changes would impact the levy that you would be considering at this time next year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alderman Conken, did you have any further questions on that?
No, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Cunningham, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor, and more importantly, to those who've come out and expressed your high interest in this particular subject. I'm going to speak with you on two phases, one of them being a person who has experienced some of the downturn of this economy and who's had to manage accordingly. It is not a very difficult, I mean, it's not an easy situation to be in. However, it is something that we must all prepare ourselves for. Second, you know, I'm not a fan of the word that service is going to be cut and this is not going to happen, because the professionals that we have within the city of Waukegan and these organizations, they will find ways in order to render the same type of service so the impact is not hit to the public, because that's what they do. When you develop processes, you develop processes for changing of times. That's what professionals do in their business. Police officers will continue to enforce the laws that are passed throughout this state in the orders that we have. Firefighters will continue to fight fires. Public works will continue to do what they do. Code enforcement will continue to do what they do. That's what professionals do. So I don't draw into the illusion that services will be cut. Our job is to find ways to get it done. That's who we are. Second, I heard tonight that particularly on the 60 Minutes, the 13 minutes of 60 Minutes, and a host of others, that we all must get in this house together and live. Apparently, some of us don't want to get in the house to live together. When we want, when there is not money in the kitty, that means everybody has to come in and start doing some of the work. We can't hire people from the outside no more. So that means, as opposed to looking at a 4% increase, you might get a 2% increase. That means you might have to work an extra hour. That means that all of us, every single one of us, from every department, from every union, from every soul that has a stake in this city, you need to get ready. Now, I'm a firm believer. I'm a Waukegan knight, and I'm proud of it. And can anyone tell me about city services? Until you've lived in certain parts of this city where sometimes city service was neglected for many years. Thank God we've been able to overcome those type of years, and now we're starting to spread those city services around so they're equal amongst the city of Waukegan. Now, we are in a pinch. Alderman Moiseo said that pinch is not going to last. The mayor said it's not going to last. The economists say it's not going to last. So while we're in that pinch, let's all of us get it together. Now, if you're not willing to get in that pinch with us, get out. Find someplace where you think you can go and be happy. But Waukegan will survive. It has survived over the years, and it will survive now. But it cannot survive as long as some people want a piece of their pie and others don't. I wasn't a fan when 18 bodies walked out of here, particularly them, particularly our clerical staff, mainly females. Some of them are single parents. I wasn't a fan of that. But I sucked it up and I moved on. Now, I don't know how this thing with the new legislation with the governors coming out, but I think we have an opportunity to take a look at it and not get it from a secondhand, but get it from those who implemented the legislation. At least find out exactly how it can affect us. If it has helped Buffalo Grove, Rockford, particularly Rockford, with a city that's similar to ours, then it must have some merit with us. It must. And I think those options should be put in front of this council first. If not, the mayor, Tina, whomever, do your due diligence, bring that information back so we can make conscious decisions that's going to benefit this city, not for a week, not for a year, but for the next five to 10 years. So long we have been managing this city, year by year, election by election, and look what it has gotten us. A mess. Now, I'm not here to lecture you, but I'm here to tell you, I want to see all options, all options, that's going to benefit the city of Waukegan, not benefit one union over the next, one individual over the next, not election over the next, but over the long haul of this community. That's what I'm looking for. And if you can't give that to me, then I'm going to vote, I think, is in the best interest of the constituents of the first who are ultimately the city of Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Do we have any other, please, folks, do we have any other comments? Alderman Tempest, please.
Thank you. I've been here a long time, maybe longer than somebody want me to be here, but that's life. I've been preaching for a long time about the bubble getting bigger and bigger and bigger. I didn't have to preach it to this mayor, he knew. But the previous mayor, and the previous mayor before that laughed at me, said it never happened, never happened. And it has happened. But I have to give the city some credit too over the years. We have kept our tax rate at a pretty level. I've seen tax rates as high as $1.67. If I can give you a little history lesson, that was during the sewer ban, which we couldn't build any more houses. That means your assessed valuation didn't grow, which meant your tax rate went up. Right now, we're faced with something worse than that, worst option. You don't have any construction going on, basically, to increase your assessed valuation, and the assessed valuation is going down dramatically. Gentlemen spoke of the ones in the sixth ward, I was writing them down. I knew them all. It's on the property going, it's a catastrophe. I've been in Waukegan all my life, and I've never seen so many vacant homes, homes going under, people walking away. It's an epidemic, and it's starting to turn around. I hope we've seen the end of it, but I don't know. I asked Tina on the proposals they had, I was not here on the finance meeting they had, I was taking care of my daughter with, had a hip operation, and that's why I missed it. But I asked, why we just had these three proposals, and I asked why, in the past, we have been able to, without a public meeting, increase the taxes up to 5% without a public meeting. And usually, you could do that with assessed valuation, your payroll kept increasing with 5% raises and so forth. So I wonder why we didn't look at that option. But you know, tonight, I saw a lot of frustration, and I think it all was lashed out of this body. And we have some other taxing bodies you need to look at too, please, and I listened to what you said tonight. You had the Park District. A few years ago, we had a big tax increase for the Park District, and boy, you saw what they went out and built. I'll be honest with you, I don't need a weight facility to go train. I can go to the regular domestic one and pay my dues there and put them on the tax rolls. School Board, number of years back, had a big increase. And if you go back on your old tax bills, you'll see what I'm talking about. But people didn't seem to have the opportunity to voice their frustration. The voters passed it on a referendum, and people were asleep, but they wanted to help their schools. I see the city, the mayor, I don't know how he's holding up tonight, I really don't, the frustration, and people saying, you know, stop, stop, stop. We have many contracts out there with 3% raises. Our government costs, cost of many things have gone up a little bit. I was prepared tonight to go ahead and possibly look at a 3% or 4% increase, 3% or 4%, I'm not talking about a big increase, 3% or 4% to try to limp along and hope the economy turned around. But I'm hearing from this group tonight, and a few phone calls I've got, is no tax increase. And I think that could hurt us in the long run somewhat, but maybe we need to suffer through that and see what happens and hope the economy does turn around. It's a very, very difficult solution, but before Alderman Needham and I, we worked on the budget last year. We went item by item, we went through it all. Haven't done that this year. I had three proposals presented to me, and that was it. So I'm lost at words tonight. I don't like taxes. When I first moved in my house in 1966, my taxes were $650. And here we are now, way, way. Of course, my stamp used to be 3 cents, it's now, what, 44 cents, so. But the economy is, we're in a depressed area, but if we don't do something, I'm afraid, we're going to go down the tubes too. I mean, it's very, very difficult, sitting up here, listening to everybody and trying to come up. I see no tax turner here. He ran on that platform once. I understood what he was saying, I really did, and you get paying those taxes, what am I getting for it? But we do have a good town, and I think Alderman Larson summarized some things pretty well. And I am torn this evening. I am torn on what to do. I told people no, and I still mean no, but what does that do to the city? What does that do to my police force? What does that do to my fire department, which is one of the best in the state? We are one of the best police departments in the state. We really do. What do you draw them in? And I look at the wages, and yeah, and I ask the unions, can you give a little? Can you give a little? And you ask about this grant, and the grant says, if they don't give a little and don't negotiate, the mayor really can't accept the grant, because it's not feasible to do it, because you're stuck with so many. And do you want to cut your force anymore? No. But we need some concessions from the unions. We need some concessions. This body right here, the Alderman, last year took no raise, didn't have to, paid for part of their insurance, never did before, and voted for the next four years, no increase, no increase at all, trying to set an example, because everybody here cares, cares very deeply. Mayor, I am bewildered of what to do. I'm being honest with you. It's mind-staining. I want to pass tonight. Is there any way we could have possibly another meeting and delay this and come up with some options of what each one means?
Here's the problem. We've started, the ball is rolling. The fuse is lit, in essence. We either solve it tonight, or we carry this meeting over to tomorrow. If we don't solve it tomorrow, we carry it over to the next day. We can't meet on Christmas. We can meet the day after Christmas and the day after the day, and I will do that. If we don't have a solution, I will make everybody come into work every day.
If we have to do it, that's okay.
And I will cancel, I will cancel. Well, now, wait a second. Now, I also want to let the folks here know that nobody at this dais was refused information during this process. There were multiple meetings, individual meetings held with each of the Aldermen. I was at most of them. The opportunity for information was there at every step of the way. We have withheld nothing from our legislators. Every legislator up here had the opportunity to come in with ideas, areas to cut, ways of solving this problem, in meetings that were held with our chief financial officer, myself, Noel Kishir, who is our legislative liaison. We are not here right out of the egg. This has been, this has been a long process. Could I, please, no more comments from the audience, if you would, please. This has been a long process. Questions have been answered. Questions have been put, and we have tried our best to make sure everybody understood where we were going and why. To say that this wasn't done, I'm not going to say is reckless, but it's disingenuous. The chance was there. This issue with the grant, this has been explained. This has been in the paper. We have made it clear why the grant couldn't be taken. We wanted it, but we can't take it under these circumstances. It's not feasible, because it locks us into a manning number. By accepting the grant, we cannot, regardless of the situation with our budget, lay off a police officer. And if one retires, he has to be replaced. If we default on the terms of the grant, we have to give back $2.8 million to the federal government. This is the truth of the grant. Nothing has been kept from any individual sitting up here before you tonight. We have to make a decision tonight. We have to make a decision, one way or the other. Now, I'm going to warn you in advance that if the vote goes for the no levy increase, I'm going to veto it, because the impact on this community, I believe, is deleterious and will be long-term. My veto can be overridden by a six-vote margin. So if I veto, then we need six votes to override my veto, and that's it. It's done. But as the chief executive officer of this corporation, and that's what I'm trying to run the city like, I believe such cuts, and I know it's unpopular, but I told you before, I was going to do things that weren't popular, and I was going to be truthful with you. The impact on our ability to serve the people of Waukegan will be great. And I appreciate Alderman Cunningham's comments, that we have professionals, and that they will get their job done. As individuals, they will, but as an organization with fewer people working within it, those accomplishments will be diminished and reduced. I want everyone to understand that. And as I said, whatever they give me, I will work with. We will look at other ways of making up revenues, so that the true cost of services are covered, and we will go from there. If they decide not to allow those revenue enhancements, we will then act accordingly. So again, I don't want anyone in this room to think, this is the first time this has been discussed, or information has been given, or suggestions have been requested. I think we do it tonight. We get the business of the people done this evening, and we move on. And we all adjust to the new reality of Waukegan.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Mayor.
Alderman Conken, please.
I have a question. I just received an email, said that, or a letter, said that the city of Waukegan was giving $2.25 million from the Department of Justice for new hires. It says that funds can be reallocated to retain officers that are slated to be laid off. Is that true or not?
I'm not aware of that, being part of it. When we received the grant, we were told this was for new hires, and it was not for if you laid people off for bringing back people who were laid off. Now, if I'm misunderstanding that.
Can we find that out for sure?
I would like to ask again, Tina, come forward and make sure that the correct information is given.
My name is...
Chief?
The Department of Justice, from my understanding, has amended the award, because there were many municipalities that were under the same circumstances as we were, that could not initially afford it based on the ramifications of what it called for. Initially, the grant was to cover new hires, but there was a lot of different situations with other communities that they may not have slotted individuals to be laid off, but it was very potential that they would be. So what they decided to do was, if there was a situation where there was a potential of a numbers of layoffs prior to the application of the grant, that they opened the window that you can possibly utilize these officers to, the grant to cover for layoffs.
But that would be prior to acceptance of the grant?
Prior to. And that dances that fine line. There was a time when we did say there was a possibility of officers being laid off. There were some unions that were, letters were sent out to unions, the layoffs did not take place. The layoffs did not take place. But the issue is still that if we do utilize these officers for the potential of the layoffs, there still is that caveat, which kind of catches all of us, that if there is someone is laid off, or, I'm sorry, laid off and/or retires, or goes out on some sort of disability, that still staffing level must be the same. So I guess that's the indication, that has to be clear. The staffing levels from whatever we apply for, which was 150 at the time, whatever amount of officers we take for that four-year period, we must keep that staffing level.
So this doesn't apply to us?
It can. It can. Essentially, if we said we were looking to lay off five, we can replace five. But that, let's say if it was at 155, we would have to keep those staffing levels at 155 for the next four years, regardless of what happens after that point.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the clarification. To be honest with everybody here, and I'll admit to it, that I was not aware of the changes from the Justice Department. And so I appreciate the fact that you did have the email, but it doesn't change the terms because as you realize, we, our budget goes into effect well after this date. We are talking about the levy right now. This is not the budget. This is not when we go through the line items. The line item comes at the budget. And we have done that last year, and we will do it again this year. And we will obviously engage with all the elected officials that are Aldermen and ask their input and do all of this together. Nothing is done in a vacuum. I want you to understand that. Nothing is done in a vacuum. We have done more to reach out and make sure that our other elected officials were aware of what was going on than I think may have been done in the past. And we have tried to establish a bond of knowledge between ourselves that hopefully would create a bond of trust so that when we do something, people understand why we're doing it, and our elected officials do too. Do we have any other comments regarding this item? Well.
I said I'll make mine at the vote.
Okay. Well, actually, I would appreciate if you make your comments now. One of the things that we have discovered, that we have been doing in the past, that at the time of the vote, you're really not supposed to do anything but vote. If you could please make your comments now, that would certainly be appreciated.
Okay, sure.
Alderman Newsom, please.
Since I have to make my comments now, I will. I've listened to everyone's comments tonight, and I've also listened to the many phone calls that I've received from those that live in my ward and those that don't. And earlier this evening, I heard it stated that not to look at the individual, but look at the community. But for me, it is the individuals that make up the community, so you can't not look at the individual. And based on the information that I've received from my constituents, I've heard them loud and clear what they want, from those that I was voted in to represent, to speak for them. So that's what I will do this evening. I'll vote accordingly to what they've asked me to do. They haven't told me how to vote, but they've asked me to please listen to what they have to say and please think about their interest when I make my vote. So that's what I'll do this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further comments from any of the members? Seeing none, I will ask for somebody to prefer a motion to accept one of the three alternatives before us, and I will allow Ms. Tappendorf to read through them and so that they are read into the record, you will be able to hear them, and then we will have one of the Aldermen make a motion to accept either item A, B, or C. And I will say that if the vote is unanimous, I will not exercise my veto because it would just simply be dragging out the process this evening. It would obviously be easily overridden, but I'll wait and see how the vote goes.
All right. Option A, and these are all the ordinance levying and assessing taxes of the city of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, for the 2010 tax levy year. Option A is to adopt an ordinance as presented approving the 2010 tax levy in the amount of $29,850,000. Option B, motion to adopt an ordinance as presented approving the 2010 tax levy in the amount of $21,929,578, or $929,578.94. And option C, motion to adopt an ordinance as presented approving the 2010 tax levy in the amount of $15,759,252.47.
We have the options before us. Alderman Moisio.
As much as it pains me, I'll make the motion for alternative C.
Alderman Moisio has moved that alternative C, which is holding the levy flat, no increase in property taxes, is on the table. We have a second, but, yes, sir. Alderman Needham.
Just a question.
Please.
If I wanted to make a motion to amend that, option C for the 5% increase, is it, should, can I do that now, or do I wait for a second on that? And if it doesn't have any wheels and...
Right. You can do it now, and then if it, the person that made the motion accepts it, then we can move that way.
Okay. Alderman Moisio, would you like to allow Alderman Needham to make the motion to accept the 5% increase?
I'm going to keep it at, no.
Okay. He says, he has said no. He is not willing to yield.
So there's, the motion on the table is to approve option C as presented.
And we have a second by Alderman Newsom. I will ask for a roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson. Alderman Rivera. Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conken.
No.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Seven-two.
At a seven-two split, I am going to force the issue through a veto because of the fact that I believe that it is in the best interest of the community to entertain, at the very least, the option that Alderman Needham wished to put on the table, which is a 5% increase, and came also from work that Alderman Tempest had done. So at this point, what we would need is a motion from an Alderman to override my veto and six votes to override.
Mayor, you said that I said. I'd said in meetings with Tina that I asked why it wasn't considered. I said I would look into it, and it's a possibility.
Okay. Well, my misinterpretation, I have the paperwork with your figures on it, and I had assumed that was something that...
Well, my name was put on it, but I didn't, no.
Okay. Well, then I will just hold that comment.
Thank you very much.
I apologize for that. Alderman Needham, if I understood your request for an amendment, was that the additional 5% raise in the levy?
Correct.
And so at this point then, as Aldermen, one of you needs to make the motion to override my veto, and then we need six votes after that is seconded, six votes to override the veto. Do we have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
To override?
To override my veto.
Six.
Alderman Needham.
I'm going to have to vote aye, don't have any traction for the 5%.
Alderman Larson. Alderman Rivera.
And this is to override the mayor's veto?
Yes.
I'm going to vote aye, because I need to see, you know, some numbers on the tax levy amendment that Alderman Needham came up with. So I vote aye to override the veto.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
They have the two-thirds majority required to override the veto, so the vote as taken, I believe, stands, and we are now, have approved a levy amount with no increase, and we will move forward from here. I'm going to request that we take a five-minute adjournment so everybody can get a drink of water, if they need to have a bathroom break. Ladies and gentlemen, from here on in, it's boilerplate, standard operating procedure. So thank you very much for attending.
Take care, Mr. Gooz.
Okay. You're up first, right? Finance? We didn't do any business, right?
Yeah, I didn't take it, Mayor.
No. That's fine. I got no, that's, I got no problem with that.
No, not with this.
We're going to go that way.
Not with this.
Better to get it out. We have a quorum. Let's get to work. You ready? These guys alone? Okay. We will roll on back through the agenda.
Sitting my ass for four, I've been here since 5:30.
We will roll back through the agenda, back up to the Finance Committee, and Alderman Needham.
Yeah, we got to take roll call, don't we? We got to take roll call again, Mayor.
We just take a break? No, not, we just took a recess. So we're fine. We're all here.
Let me give my motions out. Finance Committee met on Monday, December 13th. There was no old business. I believe three items under new business. First item, approve the applications as recommended by the Stakeholders' Participation Panel for Funding Using the 2011 Anticipated CDBG Grant Amounts. Finance Committee recommends and I so moved that the Finance Committee approve the application as recommended by the Stakeholders' Participation Panel for Funding Using the 2011 Anticipated CDBG Grant Amounts.
We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Questions?
Your Honor.
Alderman Cunningham.
I will be abstaining from voting on this because one of the participants, I think I, might be a potential conflict of interest.
Is that YCC?
No, that's the reentry.
Oh, reentry.
Reentry.
Okay, fine.
So I'll pass on this particular one.
Thank you, Alderman. Then, no other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
I will also present the rest of season.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item B, award of a contract to Monroe Truck Equipment for the purpose of public works equipment and vehicle renewal and replacement, specifically two new truck bodies in amount not to exceed $157,878. Budget code 307-1307-26494. Finance Committee recommends and I so moved that the Finance Committee recommend to the City Council that they authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Monroe Truck Equipment for the purpose of public works equipment and vehicle renewal and replacement, specifically two new truck bodies in amount not to exceed $157,000. And I think there was an issue on the dollar amount. It was eight-seven-eight.
It was eight-seven-eight.
Eight, $157,878. Budget code 307-1307-26494.
We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Last item is authorize bond proceeds for a contract for the Police Department Building Improvements. Finance Committee recommends and I so moved that the Finance Committee recommend that the City Council authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to RRP Incorporated for the purpose of Police Department Building Improvement, specifically project management related to roof replacement in amount not to exceed $25,000. Budget code 307-1307-26392.
We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing or hearing none? Roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
The eyes have it. Thank you. That concludes the Finance Committee for the evening. Alderman Needham?
That's it.
Thank you. We will move on to Public Works Committee, Alderman Rivera.
Got a, can I, I got a quick question because some of these items, those three items are related, I think, to, or at least one of them.
Twice.
Right. It's repeated, so I don't know if we have to vote on those twice.
Well, those two items, if I, I'm going to hold those two items over. I'd ask.
A and B?
A and B.
Okay.
The first two items, I'm going to hold over.
Never mind.
One, well, I have to hold those over. It would be very hypocritical for me to be asking for spending this kind of amount of money on these things. We're going to hold it over, and I'm requesting that we hold it over. One of them is for the amount of about $150, excuse me, Monroe Truck, which is like about For both, it would amount to about $157,000. The whole family. And the other item, which was the stunt grinder, was about $35,000. So holding it on over until we look into it a little more. The other items, item C, a south-of-sidewalk easement for Fifth Third Bank Development located on 702 North Green Bay Road. So move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by, I'm sorry, Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item D, a sub-easement to the Fifth Third Bank Development located at 702 North Green Bay Road. That's a move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. That concludes our report for the Public Works Committee and all their action items. Now we move to Alderman Figueroa and the Judiciary Committee report.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Judiciary Committee met this evening at 5:30 PM to address one issue on the agenda had to do with zoning calendar 20330, and that is for the text amendment to zoning ordinance specifically allowing vocational schools at the B, in the B2 community shopping district. This zoning allows educational programs to go on, but it does not allow, for some reason, does not allow trade and vocational schools under Section 31. But because this directly affects a project to, that YCC has made a bid, or not a bid, but an offer on a building at 1020 Greenwood, I am going to abstain from voting. This is the reason why this amendment has come forth. So what I'm going to abstain from voting, allow Alderman Cunningham to go ahead and make the motion, if he would.
So move. We have the motion by Alderman Cunningham, I'm sorry, seconded by Alderman Larson. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll take a roll call on that, please.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
The eyes have it, thank you very much. Now we move to old business. Item A, this is an item that was requested to be held over by Alderman Cunningham. Motion by myself, seconded by Alderman Rivera, to approve an amendment to agreement which expires February 28th, 2011, between the City of Waukegan and the International Association of Firefighters Local 473 for purpose of adding the rank of captains. Alderman Cunningham, are you prepared to allow this to move forward?
Yeah, yes, I am, Your Honor, with, with, with these comments. Your Honor, I think we've heard tonight clearly, clearly, of many things that our citizens is asking us to do. They're asking everybody to take a hard look at what is important to this city, and that is everybody make some concessions on certain things in life. I particularly have a, a tough time dealing with this particular motion. We have senior level, senior level management is asking to join the union. I respect, you know, what the unions do. I respect, you know, what they stand for, but once you become management, you are now saying that you're giving up that aspect, and that is the separation between management and the people that they, they manage. I mean, I, I have a major problem with that. And we're not talking about frontline leaders, we're talking senior level management. I, 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 I just, I don't understand that. I really don't understand. And sometimes, and I, and I, and I get it, I come from the corporate world, I get that. In the corporate world, when the stock is not doing good, senior management don't get paid. But when the stock is doing good, senior management get rewarded heavily. And if you take a look over the last 10 years, I'm gonna look at the last 10 years, management has done well. Over the last 20 years, management has done well in the city of Waukegan. We are going through some difficult times now, and that is what management is there for. They accept the good times along with the bad. I'm not gonna be a fan favorite, I understand that, but I just have a fundamental problem with, we're asking senior level management to come back into the union. Then why did you get out of it? You got out of it to excel yourself. Senior level management don't get the same pay as others. They get a different kind of pay as those who are, a different kind of pay. They get a different type of responsibility. We ask more of them. So, that was my biggest problem. I did speak with the chief, I wanna, I appreciate him. I spoke with a couple of the, I'm not gonna say to the, those gentlemen are, are involved, but I spoke with some fire, I just have, I personally have an issue with that. So, that's where I'm at, and, you know, let the vote go as, you know, as you guys wanna go, but, you know, we can't continue to say management and, and, and the people that they manage are, there is no, if there, if there's not a difference, then why do we, why do we need them? And that's the biggest question I can't understand right now, coming from the world that I come from. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Do we have any other comments?
Yes.
Alderman Tempest?
I've met with the chief regards this too, but I really think we need to send this matter back to the Labor Relations Committee to look at it, and I, I would, I would make that motion.
Okay, we have the request by Alderman Tempest to hold this over again, to return it back to committee.
Return it back to Labor Relations.
That will be returned back to the, to the Labor Committee for further discussion. We'll set a meeting to come up in the next, well, you may do it while I'm out, that's perfectly fine. You just call the meeting as you wish. So, we'll hold that over. Now we move on to item B.
We need to put in Labor Relations.
It'll go back to Labor Relations.
We need to vote, don't we? Need to vote on that? No. No.
No, we're just sent, returning it. We have item B, the motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moisio to authorize to sell $1, $1 properties to a local not-for-profit housing groups at cost. Now, this is requested to have been held over by Alderman Tempest. Did you have all your questions answered in regards to the item B under old business?
On the B, old business.
The CDBG.
No, oh, but, but, I'm sorry, I know Larry's getting ready, but before they're sold, they're still gonna come back to us for each and every individual house, right?
Yeah.
That's what I was.
That's how it works.
If I may answer, Your Honor, I did speak to Yezel Robbins, your director, and I just, I asked him, I'd like to see some policies developed and how we're gonna do this and who we're gonna let, rather than just all of a sudden a name pops up, I wanna do this, how many people were given the opportunity to look into this? And so he said he would be working on a policy, so as long as it comes back to this body, Your Honor, I, I don't have a problem, but I would like to see him develop a policy.
Okay, well, we'll work with you on that, I'm sure Yezel will be more than happy to. Given that, we will, I'll ask for a roll call on that item, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
The eyes have it, thank you. Item C was also requested to be held over by Alderman Tempest. This was a motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moisio to authorize, to allow rehabilitated $1 properties to be sold to households at 80% of a median family income at 80% of the post rehabilitation appraisal price. Alderman Tempest, did you have your questions satisfied?
If I may comment, Your Honor, again, I asked Mr. Robbins to develop a policy on how he was gonna put this into effect. How do we determine who and who's, do we take applications or how do, and I'd like him to develop a policy on how he's gonna handle this. And you're coming back to us, fine, you know, but we should develop a policy on certain.
Are you prepared to allow the vote?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good. We'll take a roll call on that as well, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Okay. Item D, I'll read it, but it has been requested that we hold this over one more time.
We've got it, I think we have to table it.
We need to table it, then.
We probably should have a motion to lay it on the table.
I so move, just a matter of timing on final drawings and make sure everybody's seen what we're doing here.
Excuse me, we have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by, I don't, do we have a second, by Alderman Figueroa to table? They will obviously get more information, make sure that this is done properly, and return it back out of committee then. It does not need to go back to committee. Okay, so, all right, fine, it'll be brought up in the next session, I apologize for that. That concludes our old business. We have no communications before us. Under new business and recommended actions by Corporation Council, we have item A, excuse me, which is to approve the payroll dated December 15th, 2010, in the amount of $1,318,172.61, a motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item C, having been taken care of already, we will move down to item D. I'll take a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report from the Treasurer's Office for the month of November 2010. Motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item E is a presentation by our city treasurer, Dr. John Schwab. Dr. Schwab.
Very simple, I, we'd hope to present the audit for 2009, 2010 tonight, but due to the tax levy issues, the audit will be presented in February. That ends it.
Do we have any questions regarding the Treasurer's Report? Seeing none, hearing none, we will move on to item 11. Excuse me. Ordinances and Resolutions. Item A, ordinance to reflect restricting parking to no parking between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM on school days, except by resident permit, on the west side of Victor Street, between Washington Street and Clayton Street, west of Philippa Avenue, between Washington Street and Clayton Street, and the east and west side of Chapel Street, between Washington Street and Clayton Street.
So move, Your Honor, and ask Victory Street.
Yes, Victory, I was just informed that that's a typo, so it's Victory Street. We have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. This is a roll call, man. We'll have a roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item B, ordinance to reflect the placement of a one-way yield sign for westbound Eastwood Road at Charleston Road. Motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item C, ordinance to approve the preliminary plat of the McGaw Road Commercial Subdivision zoning calendar 2306, located at Waukegan Road between Lakehurst and McGaw Road. Take a motion.
So three.
Whose committee did this come out of?
Preliminary plat. Came out of Judiciary.
Motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item C, ordinance to approve the preliminary plat of the McGaw Road Commercial Subdivision zoning calendar 2306, located at Waukegan Road between Lakehurst and McGaw Road. Take a motion.
So three.
Whose committee did this come out of?
Preliminary plat. Came out of Judiciary.
Motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item E, ordinance, approve the map amendment from B3 General Commercial to I2 General Industrial Zoning Calendar number 2307B at West Terminus of Apple Avenue, west of Green Bay Road. Motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item E, ordinance, approve the map amendment from B3 General Commercial to I2 General Industrial Zoning Calendar number 2307B at West Terminus of Apple Avenue, west of Green Bay Road. Motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
The eyes have it, thank you. Now we move into Alderman's time. Mr. Clerk, if you would, please.
Alderman Needham.
Well, don't wanna beat a dead horse, but I think we all know there's gonna be a huge challenge in front of us with the levy we adopted. Let's not kid ourselves, there are gonna be changes. We're gonna have to find new ways to increase revenues, or existing, and push that and cut expenses, big time. But maybe one way we can do that is to keep preaching to everybody that we need to spend our dollars in town. So when you fill up your gas tank, you're gonna do your grocery shopping, what have you, that all adds up, you know? We got 100,000 people here. Really need, need to get focused and preach, spend your money in Waukegan, that, that will help somewhat. Those are my comments.
Alderman Larson.
Thank you. It's my annual tradition, the meeting before the holiday, Christmas holiday, to thank my wife for deciding to mirror me 37 years ago. My 37th anniversary is on the 28th of this month.
I'm a lucky man, and I appreciate everything that she's done for me, and you all know her, she's much, much the better half of this union, so thank you very much.
Alderman Rivera.
Can we make a motion for, for her?
Did Dorst that state? We sent her a plaque or something.
Today was a difficult decision that I made. I represent the people of the 9th Ward. That's who voted me in, and that's who I listened to. I was appalled at the end of the meeting, at the behavior of certain people. I refuse, and I'm not going to be intimidated by anyone, by anyone, especially when they're, they're going to put the blame on you. That was very unprofessional, and they know who I'm talking about. There's five other aldermen up here that voted for it. I'm not going to be intimidated. If that's how you want to rule, by fear, that's not the way to govern this community. Ruling by fear is not the way to do it. Intimidation is not the way to do it. So I refuse, I'm not going to be intimidated. I'm not going to be bullied, pick on someone else, but I will let you know that I'm not going to sit up here and accept that kind of behavior. I respect the positions, everyone up here, with their positions, and what they have to decide on. But that other behavior is totally unacceptable. I take that personally, because you're not respecting the position of all of them. You think this is easy, making these decisions? Of course not. So I refuse, and I won't be intimidated. When I make a decision, I make a decision based on what's best for the people of this community, and this would have hurt them big time. And if you didn't like that, then you better look at all the aldermen up here that made That's all I have to say. Oh, Merry Christmas.
Alderman Cunningham.
Merry Christmas to everybody, and a Happy New Year.
Alderman Conkin.
My sentiments exactly, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, I hope everybody enjoys the holidays with their families, drive safely on New Years, and get, comes back and says hello in 2011. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
I just want to reiterate, there was no joy in making that motion, there was a tough time, we didn't have a good talk, this was a tough over, the next four or five months of the year, it was tough, a lot of, for everybody up. There was no joy in making these decisions, what you elected for, what you get paid for, it's what we have to do, if I just go back to what I said, at the end of the day, I work with that, that's who I represent. Taxpayers aren't maybe always right, the masses aren't always right, you have to listen to them, try to weigh both sides. And, I don't know, maybe it needs to get this bad for us to get it right? I don't know. But we're going to have challenges, we're going to have to come together, we can't be arguing or fighting with each other, because we won't get anything done. We do, we need to come together, plus we can't try to make, make a bust out of this, because it's not going to be easy at all. This is just, this is part of the beginning of a miserable, miserable time. We can point the fingers, and we can blame for sins of the past, that that's not going to change the situation we're in. They can vote all of us out up here, that's not going to change the situation we're in. It's not going to change. It is what it is, and we have to go forward and find solutions for it, and I think we have a staff that has the ability to do that.
Alderman Figueroa.
There's a lot of gloom and doom that was expressed by citizens, came here tonight, and I was going to address a lot of issues, but I'm not, I'm really, just the bottom line that I wanted to express that with the lakefront and downtown revitalization, not going to happen overnight, but that's going to expand the tax base. There's a lot of, there's a lot of pent-up demand in the United States for property, similar to what we have on the lakefront, and there's a lot of negativity about this, but I really feel positive that sometime in the near future, it's going to start rolling, it's going to pick up steam, and many of the decisions that we make, CLC, Genesee Theater, these are all positive decisions. And I just wanted to say Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, and a prosperous New Year.
Alderman Newsome.
I would like to echo Alderman Moiseo. It was not an easy decision to make, but I'd like to look at it as the glass half-full, not half-empty. And I believe that we, up here, as a governmental body, we were elected to be representatives of this city, and problem solvers. We're here to work on the problems that we have in this community, and I believe, and I have faith, that we will, we'll turn things around. We didn't get into this position overnight, and we're not going to get out overnight, but I believe this too shall pass, and then we'll be able to stand again, whole, complete, as we have been in the past, way past, but I believe too that this shall pass, so I'd like to wish everyone a happy, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year as well. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. This evening, we gave the voters of the community a chance to vent the frustrations, the shortcomings of the city in some respects, but I heard two things. Once they wanted more for less money, and more services for less money, they wanted both ends, as someone said very well, we're going to have to have some cuts, no doubt in my mind. The unions are going to have to get back to the negotiating table. It's that simple. It's that simple. I think the aldermen set a good example, no raise, no, not less, no raise, we dispensed the raise we're supposed to get, and added to our other costs, and I think the mayor was put kind of in a tough spot today when he vetoed it, in my heart, I couldn't go against him, because he was, in his heart, he was doing what he had to, and he has the power to veto. I was looking for possible compromise, maybe, you know, 5%, I did talk to Tina, if I can cower Tina, in regards to why didn't that come before us, before, why did we put it at the end, why wasn't it there? We could have went ahead with this vote, and you could have increased it 4% or 5% without a public hearing, but I think the taxpayers needed that, it gave them a place to vent, and I think some other taxing bodies need to get the message. We, the City of Waukegan, basically have been very frugal throughout the years, we really have. We don't have a cash reserve built up, but the other taxing bodies have raised their tax levies significantly compared to the City of Waukegan, but also the aldermen, I think they realize the power vested in us, representing the people, have the power to tax you out of your house. We have no tax limit, and that's scary in a sense. We have to be responsible to our voters, and we have to give them a good service for what we have, and as someone else said in the council this evening, we're going to have to work together, work harder, departments are going to have to work harder, and we're going to have to start doing more things for ourself. You don't call the dog catcher when you got a dead squirrel out in the street. Go and pick the darn thing up, put them in a garbage can, and throw them out. I mean, tree in the park, we need slow trimming, trim the darn thing yourself, climb the tree and trim it yourself. You can do that with a skunk, too. Damn right, I'll do it with a skunk. I'm not afraid to do it, I'm really not.
Get a permit first.
What?
Get a permit first.
If he's dead?
No, trimming trees.
Well, my dead branches up there, I'll go trim those, you can sue me if you want, it's all right. You got to do what you got to do, Alderman. Well, I've spoken enough, but Mayor, I know you're going in for surgery, and I wish you the very, very best, and best success on that when you go in, and thank you for letting me speak, thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody. Two things. One, I failed to acknowledge the passing of George Patterson, the owner of Louis', who was a good friend to, John McIsaac's wife passed away as well. George was a good friend to thousands of people, they came into his restaurant daily, he was a fixture. So what we're going to do is, we're going to write up a letter of condolence and to the family, and I'd like every alderman to sign it.
Thank you.
If you would, please, and we'll get that done in the next couple of weeks, and have it available, hopefully at the next city council meeting, for everyone to sign on.
That's my headquarters, you know.
I know. There was a few other people's headquarters, too, it didn't, it didn't work out so well, you know, for everyone, but.
Bernie Drew.
This was a very emotionally charged evening. There was a great deal of energy in this room, and I have to say, I'm very proud of the way that our citizens carried themselves this evening. They didn't allow themselves to become angry, they didn't raise their voices, they didn't shout, they didn't make threats of any kind, they said, this is what we want, you as a legislative body accepted the request and voted accordingly. And we, as, I myself as the manager, and staff as part of that, a part of the organization, will begin to prepare to conform the city to its new realities, but we will also be looking for new revenue streams. So hopefully, you'll be receptive to some of the things that we bring you, so that we can, in some way, reflect the true cost of the services that we provide to the people of Waukegan in those charges, so that they're up front, and they're known, and people get a better idea as to what government really costs. That was the reason I put that highest level up there, was I wanted people to understand that for us to get out of the hole we're in, to close our gaps, to have no deficit, this was the cost, and it would have only been borne for a couple of years, but it was, I knew from the beginning untenable. But I still felt it needed to be on there so people could see the numbers before themselves. The decisions have been made, and we'll begin to prepare ourselves for that new reality right away. I'll take a motion to adjourn by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Conkin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?